Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting to order. This is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. And I'd like to welcome everyone that's here tonight, either in the audience or by live stream. Appreciate you being with us tonight by different means and taking time out of your busy schedules to be with us tonight. So, thank you very much. Item number two under the opening is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Martin, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you, Mr. Martin. Item number three on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, and I don't have any additions or deletions. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Dr. Gilpin, a second by Mr. Martin to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Mr. Beckwith is not with us in person tonight, but he is here by Zoom. He is at home and attending the meeting by that means. Item number four on the agenda is the recognitions, and the first one is a caring educator and principal Mark Barney. The principal at South Middle School is going to present the recipient of that for that month. So, Mark, the floor is yours, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Queen, good evening, board members. Dr. Murphy, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Mark Barney. I'm the principal of South Middle School. When asked to present this award and to and to select someone to receive this award, South Middle School is full of really, really good teachers. And we can have a lot of conversation about the characteristics of good teachers. But I think when you're talking about the caring educator award, you got to talk about someone who takes that good destruction and and does a little bit more with it. Someone who develops self-confidence in her students, someone who encourages students and doesn't criticize them, someone who is inspiring to students, someone who's impartial when working with all students, and promotes the all-around development, not just the academic development of all students. And so, I'm very honored and very proud to present that caring educator award to Heather Harley, eighth grade reading teacher at South Middle School. And she's out there via Zoom, and she thought she was coming to a presentation about a new yearbook that you guys were going to consider. But she should have known, the board's not going to consider that anyhow. That would be up to us at the school. So, she she joined us today, and she was had no idea this was coming. So, thank you, Ms. Harley, for your service to South Middle School. We greatly appreciate you. We're very proud of you. You do a wonderful job for us.
Thank you, Mr. Barney.
Heather, this is Dr. Queen. I just want to thank you for being a teacher and being.
Thank you. I think I lost the audio on that. But thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
We can't hear. Test. There you go. Test.
Do you want to just give him my mic?
Test. Test. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, we lost the audio there for a few minutes, so we're going to resume. Heather, did you hear what I had to say?
I just heard the very beginning.
Okay, but thank you so much for being a teacher and doing what you do every day for the children at South Middle. We appreciate it so much. It's a tough time right now, and we realize that for everyone. But thank you so much for being a teacher and making a difference in kids' lives every day. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure. Thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Item number two under recognitions is the champion for education, and I would like to present the recipient of that award for this meeting. And I would like to present to everyone, Mr. Jim Rickert. Jim is here by Zoom. He and his wife and his daughter Sally are with us tonight. There they are. Let's say hello to everyone.
Aye. Good to be here. Good to see everyone.
Hey, Jim, I have a letter that I would like to read. If you don't mind kind of pointing out a lot of the things that you've done for this county. Says, Dear Mr. Rickert, on behalf of Berkeley County Board and Schools, we would like to thank you for your service of over 29 years as the Board of Education representative to the Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks and Rec Board. Your tenure representing the Board of Education as a member of our Board of Directors since October 1991 speaks volumes to your commitment and service to the Berkeley County community. Over over those 29 years of volunteer service, you have been directly involved in the development and expansion of our public parks, coupled with the growth and programs that have served all members of the community. Most significant was your key role in the development of Poorhouse Farm Park that today stands as a hallmark of your tenure. The Parks and Rec Board recognized you for this achievement by naming the lake at the park in your honor, Rickert Lake. As a way of thanking and recognizing your community-minded spirit and many years of community leadership on the board, your role as a community leader and civic-minded community member extends into all aspects of Berkeley County. As a Hedgesville High School graduate, you were recognized as outstanding alumni, and you have served on several other boards to include the hospital board and the Roundhouse Authority. Your leadership ability to see the benefit and welfare for our community serves all of us today and into the future for generations to enjoy. I want to thank you also for being a role model for others to see how one individual can make a difference in serving the public and the interest of our youth. Parks and Rec facilities will increasingly become a priority for our community as the county grows and has developed. Your role and responsibility as a leader established a sound foundation for others to follow and build up on a solid future. We all wish you continued success in your next endeavor in life and deeply appreciate your dedication to our community over these past 29 years on the board. Jim, I personally and on behalf of the board want to thank you for everything you've done for this county. You certainly made a difference, and you put your mark on a number of things that will help benefit children, and we appreciate it so much. Your service for 29 years is unparalleled, sir, and you should be very proud of your efforts to make this a better place for our children and for our adults and for the community in general. So, Mr. Rickert, I congratulate you. Thank you very much. Sally, Mrs. Rickert, thank you for being here tonight, and it's such an honor to present you with this award. Laurel, do you have the apple there? Could we see the apple? There we go.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Lot of work that enjoyed that kept me going, kept me healthy, met a lot of good people, lot of supporters. That's what counts when you're trying to get something accomplished for the community. Thank you again. Appreciate your time that you spent doing what you have been doing for me and for Berkeley County schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mrs. Rickert, and thank you, Sally Unger, for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Item number five on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. I'd like to read the instructions for Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is a time for the public desiring to address the board on any topic at a regular meeting. To keep the time for the Citizens Forum to a reasonable level, the board president will determine and allot a time for each speaker in order to allow the board to conduct its regularly scheduled business. The board shall not consider, discuss, or take action on items addressed during Citizens Forum that do not appear on tonight's meeting agenda. Due to the current guidelines and best practices recommended by federal and state health officials, we will be conducting Citizens Forum in person virtually. In person and virtually. The board has accepted emailed comments, and those comments have been shared with the board members and will not be read aloud nor shared publicly unless the citizen joins the meeting to read his or her statement online. As the board president, I have determined that speakers will have the opportunity to share comments for three minutes. Derogatory comments, profanity, inappropriate comments, or referencing an employer or student by name will result in muted a muted microphone or removal from the active Zoom meeting. Citizens who have requested to speak via Zoom have been given access to join the meeting. Speakers have joined the meeting via waiting room and remain there until announced. When announced, the speaker will be given audio access to the meeting. Once a speaker has completed addressing the school board where the speaker's time has expired, the speaker will be removed from the Zoom meeting and may continue viewing the meeting through website streaming. So, with that being said, the first person signed up to speak at Citizens Forum is Jana Wolfter. Jana, the floor is yours.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't unmute. Good evening, board members, senior administration, and guests. I am Jana Wolfter, a chemistry teacher at Spring Mills High School, but I am once again coming to you in my capacity as Berkeley County Education Association President. As I have mentioned at the last two board members, board meetings, BCEA and other representatives have been working with Dr. Murphy and some of the senior staff to help resolve the issue of the mounting workload that has been looming over our educators during this difficult time. We have asked for a remote day a week to allow educators to plan, grade, develop spectacular lessons, and conference with our students and their parents or guardians. This would allow educators the time to focus on all of our students, as they deserve. This day would not be a day off for students, but instead, a day for them to work on pre-prepared lessons and synchronous learning. Every student deserves the dedication our magnificent teachers have to offer. Currently, we are drowning in the workload and sacrificing our time with our families. As I have stated before, this pace is not sustainable. Multiple times when meeting with someone from the central office, they have referred to upcoming holidays. BCEA has reminded them time and time again, these are scheduled days off for our educators, days to recover from the stress of educating during a pandemic and spend time with our families. As I have before stated, educators are our families. They have children, they have spouses, they sleep, pay taxes, and deserve holidays, just like everyone else. The continued implication that these holidays should take the place of a meaningful built-in day into our schedule for preparing lessons is insulting. There have been discussion of the extra planning time that we have allotted this year. While we do have extra planning time, we have a minimum triple the amount of work that we are usually doing to reach our students. I feel if all educators only worked on their scheduled time, then lots of things would not get done. I would call for my members to do this and give a glimpse of what we are going through, but this would never happen. Our educators care about our students and would not sacrifice their education to prove a point. Instead, we will continue to give until we have no more to give and leave the profession. Then, where will Berkeley County be? The end of the nine weeks is now upon us, and time has run out. We knew we would have concern for some of our families, which is why we hope to get a plan together prior to the end of the nine weeks, allowing families time to adjust and plan. Yet now, 28 days later, we still have no resolution but a plan for another meeting. We are starting week three of remote learning. No one has asked for this situation. Educators miss our students, and our students miss us. We are professionals. We need more time built into our contracted schedules to focus on ensuring every student in Berkeley County, brick or click, receives a quality education. Thank you for your time.
The next person to sign up to speak is Michelle Barnhart.
Can y'all hear me? Members of Board of Education, Dr. Murphy, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Michelle Barnhart. I am an educator at Berkeley County Schools, but tonight I speak to you as a parent, an aunt, and an educator. While I understand that we are in a situation that we've never navigated before, I have concerns about how our children are being educated and the equity of that education. My sister called me last night regarding my nephew, who is in the first grade. My nephew has only received half of a kindergarten education due to the pandemic. The second half of kindergarten is where students typically learn to read sight words and beginning of phonetics of the written language. Her concern was that she works all day, and she can't assist my nephew with class meetings. And she herself has a learning disability, and she can't pronounce words and work on bow sounds that he needs to know, and he's falling further behind. My nephew already has cards stacked against him, and his foundational reading education is greatly affected. And I know that he is not the only student in that situation in Berkeley County Schools. On the other spectrum, my son is a straight A honors student in a normal school year. I teach the curriculum that he's learning. However, he is at home while I'm teaching my students. My son is smart, but he doesn't have an independent drive, and he needs teachers and peers to keep him focused. And my son's currently getting Ds and Fs in school. My daughter is a freshman, and while driven, she's basically maintaining the education she already has and is not really learning anything new. Then, there's my own students. I teach special education, and when my students are in front of me, I can teach them. Virtually, I'm struggling to reach them. Oftentimes, they don't even show up to virtual classes in the past three weeks. I'll do whatever I need to do to the best of my ability as a teacher to teach my students. As a parent and as an aunt, what should I do? It's not the lack of training. It's not the lack of time. The teachers that we have in this county are amazing, and they're going above and beyond in this situation. Nelson Mandela said that education is the most powerful weapon, which you can use to change the world. How are we going to change the world in this pandemic when half of our student population is not succeeding virtually? Thank you.
This concludes Citizens Forum. We'll go to item number six, which is the consent agenda. We're the minutes of the regular meeting on October 19th. We have one curricular and extracurricular trip request. We have one past volunteer to approve. We have one useless school property request. We have one budget supplement request and 13 budget transfer request. And there's a policy that's going out for comment review. That's BCS filed JGH Title IX Sexual Arrestment Policy, and that comment period will be November 4th through November 18th, 2020. We need to approve the payment of bills and approve the invoices for the month ending October 31st, 2020. So, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? I'm going to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Dr. Gilpin to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye. Any opposed? That carries unanimously. Item number seven on the agenda is the monitoring items, and the first one is the Berkeley County Schools Benchmarking Report. And Betty Ann Powell is here to give us that presentation. Betty Ann, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Queen, board members, Dr. Murphy, and administrative staff. Thank you so much for having me here this evening. I think that I'm going to need to share my screen so that you can see my PowerPoint, unless it's up on the screen there. Do you see? Is it on the screen there? Okay. All righty. So, this evening, I am here to talk to you about our district achievement benchmarking project that we did. We started it last winter through Hanover Research Company out of Arlington, Virginia. And we worked on that all through last winter and early spring. And so, we have a report that we would like to bring to your attention and just review some of those items this evening. Go ahead, Dave, you can advance. And our agenda for this purpose is going to be just the local and regional portion of the Hanover Research Project. And then, after that, we're going to talk about and briefly how this aligns with our district priorities, as well as our upcoming project of our mission, vision, and core beliefs. All right. So, our district achievement benchmark, the complete report can be found at that URL there. If you would like to look at that at your leisure, and you can kind of review every every piece of this report. What I have pulled out for tonight are just some key things that I thought would be of interest to speak about this evening. Thank you. All right. So, what was the reason for this? What was our why? What was our purpose? And what did we want to do with this project? So, really, what we were looking at and talking about as a as a group of practitioners here was a comparison of what Berkeley County Schools look like in relation to our state and our regional peers, and to benchmark our strengths and areas that we found that could be used for areas of growth. We also wanted to provide a resource for Dr. Murphy, the superintendent's work plan, and then also for our strategic plan, and kind of provide us with valuable information that we could use for those supporting documents that we will be looking at to guide our instruction and guide our work throughout the rest of the school year. And then, of course, I, you know, one thing that that comes up is this is a continuous growth and progress. We always want to be future-forward and growing. And so, this is a way that it could kind of take us into a a territory where we have never really gone before, is to kind of learn some new things about Berkeley County and our neighboring districts. All right. So, part of the report, it's really kind of divided into four sections, per se. And it's how Berkeley County Schools looks in comparison to multiple districts around the state, as well as our regional, some regional areas, and then also nationally. And the report's divided into four sections. It talks about district overview, our student demographics, our performance and achievement, as well as college and career readiness. Now, looking at Berkeley County in comparison with districts around the state, the districts that we chose along with Hanover, we kind of talked about districts that would be most like Berkeley County. And we have Cavill, Jefferson, Kanawha, Mont and Galia, Ohio, Putnam, Raleigh, and Wood. So, as we talk about things in this report, and we talk about comparisons of Berkeley County and our our state peers, keep in mind that those are the eight counties and districts in which we are talking about, not not the state in its in its entirety, but just those eight counties. All right. So, looking at our district achievement benchmarking and thinking about Berkeley County Schools in comparison with the West Virginia districts, some things that stood out or some notable areas of interest were, of course, Berkeley County has the second largest enrollment, and that is we are behind Kanawha County. We have the second highest pupil-to-teacher ratio, also behind Jefferson County. We have the highest median household income within those eight counties. And we also have one of the lowest per-student expenditures, which is almost about $1,200 less per student, and the next closest district to us would be Wood. So, that is something that was notably of interest within the report. All right. So, thinking about Berkeley County Schools and the and our student demographics and what we what our students look like comprised within our district compared to the other parts of the state, Berkeley County is one of three districts with the greatest percentage of students who are receiving special education services. And that we could also be in comparison with Putnam and Wood County. We have the second greatest percentage of students who are receiving free and reduced-price lunch, and we are in comparison to that. The highest county would be Raleigh County of those eight counties that we spoke of. We also have the second greatest percentage of Black students behind Kanawha County. So, continuing on with student demographics based on Berkeley County and our other peer districts within the state, we have the second greatest percentage of Hispanic students behind Jefferson County. We have the second lowest percentage of Asian students behind Ohio, Raleigh, and Wood, and two of those have the exact same percentage. And then, among our peer districts, Berkeley County Schools actually has the lowest percentage of white students enrolled in in school. So, that's a little comparison or summary of our student demographics. By comparing Berkeley County to our other neighboring districts. Now, switching gears, still thinking about Berkeley County in comparison with those other eight counties within the state, thinking about performance and achievement. Berkeley County is most similar to Raleigh County School in terms of our proficiency on ELA and math standardized testing. And I think the last time we were, Robin Lopez and I spoke in front of the board, we talked about this when we were doing our our presentation on the strategic plan. So, at that point, we're looking at the lowest rate of proficiency in ELA at 46%, which is equal to Raleigh County, and the second lowest rate of math proficiency at 39%, which is above Raleigh and equal to Cavill County. Now, keeping in mind, we're looking at old data. Last year, we, of course, did not have standardized testing due to the pandemic, but neither did anyone else in the entire United States that was waived by the feds. So, also thinking about performance and achievement, our rate of chronic absenteeism and disciplinary events are slightly below average or at average, slightly below or at average as compared to our other West Virginia peers. And we do have one of the lowest dropouts rates according to to those those peer districts within within West Virginia. Okay, thinking about, again, Berkeley County in comparison to those eight districts within West Virginia, and keeping up with college and career readiness. Berkeley County is one of the top five highest rates of enrollment in AP courses, and those are our other districts within the state who are in comparison with us, Mont and Galia, Wood, Jefferson, Putnam, and Kanawha. We are one of the top three highest rate. We have one of the top three highest rates of dual enrollment courses behind, along with Putnam and Kanawha. And then, our enrollment in CTE is among high average of our top state peers. So, that is something we definitely can kind of be proud of here within Berkeley County. So, now, switching gears. So, what we're going to take a peek at now, you have a kind of a little snapshot of what Berkeley County looks like in relation to those districts in the state. So, now, we want to think, well, what does Berkeley County look like in comparison to some of our surrounding school systems in in this area? None of these would be within the state, but they would all be within this surrounding area. So, when you're thinking about these kinds of things, you want to kind of also keep in mind that not every state does everything the exact same way. So, when we're here within the state, we're comparing definitely apples to apples. But in some cases outside the state, we are looking at apples to oranges, because not everyone is under the same guidelines that other states are. So, those districts within this region would be Allegheny County. So those districts within this region would be Allegheny County, Maryland, Washington County, Maryland, and Frederick County, Maryland. Then in Pennsylvania, we have Greencastle, Antrim, Waynesboro, Chambersburg and Tuscarora. And then within Virginia, we have Winchester Public, Frederick County, Clark County and Loudoun. And I think some of these schools are also, when we're thinking about our teachers and teachers that we are leaving Berkeley County and moving to some of these districts, there are a few of these districts in which we do and have lost teachers to those areas. Alright, so in the same format as we talked about with our state peers, thinking about these regional districts, looking at a district overview of those districts compared with Berkeley County, we have the fourth largest enrollment behind Loudoun, Frederick and Washington, Maryland. We also looking at our pupil to teacher ratio that falls right in the median range. So we are no, not significantly higher or lower than any of those districts, we're right in the middle. Berkeley County Schools has a medium, median household income, and it falls within, within the median range as well. It's not significantly higher or lower than any of those districts. But we do, however, have the lowest per student expenditures at $10,690 per student. But again, funding is definitely something that would be different in, in other states compared to West Virginia. Alright, looking at our district overview again with our regional peers, highest percentage of students receiving, receiving special education services. So Berkeley County would have the highest percentage of those students. Third highest percentage of students receiving free and reduced lunch. So with all of those peer groups, we would be looking at the third highest percentage of students who get free and reduced lunches. But our median household, household fall, income falls within that median range. So that, that is something that's interesting as well. Alright, so thinking about another student demographics, what does, what does our district look like in comparison to our regional district peers? Well, Berkeley County has the fourth lowest percentage of Hispanic students behind Waynesboro, Greencastle, Tuscarora and Allegheny. We have the third lowest percentage of Asian students behind Tuscarora and Waynesboro. We do have the fourth highest percentage of black students behind Washington, Frederick and Winchester. And our percentage of white students falls within the median range. So we're kind of just right, right there in the middle with all of those other districts. So thinking about college and career readiness based on our regional peers, we have the third highest percentage of students who enrolled in higher education. We have our percentage of students enrolled in AP falls within the median range. And our percentage of students enrolled in dual enrollment falls also within the median range. And we have the second lowest dropout rate in comparison with Clark County, Virginia. So with that being said, thinking about what does Berkeley County look like with our peers within the district? And what does Berkeley County look like within our peers who are relatively close to us in, in our region? And thinking about our purpose for doing this, the information that we gleaned from this, and I think we also shared this at our last board meeting with all of you, this is kind of a little graphic, a flow chart per se, that talks about how all of these documents that we do have, have stemmed from information from this report and from this guidance document. We use this for our information for our school district strategic plan, for Dr. Murphy's work plan, threaded down through our school strategic plans, threaded through the depart, our department here, at the central office level, all of our departmental plans, annual employee goals, and then, of course, after that, the evaluation. So that was a very important process that we wanted to see what would this work, how else would this work be threaded through? So another thought is redefining our mission, vision and core beliefs. And that's an ongoing project that we have right now started just a couple of weeks ago and should end up by the end of December. We should work as a team and as a group of educators, administrators, teachers, school personnel, as well as parents and community members. We have about 30 folks working together to redefine our mission, vision and core beliefs. Surveys have been sent out to the community and a lot of this work has been threaded through that as well. And that is the end of the presentation that I have for you all. If you have any thoughts or have any questions at this time, I can try to answer them for you.
My first question is, within the state of West Virginia, what do you think with $1,200 less expenditure per student of these identified counties?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to restate that back to you. I had difficulty hearing. You're asking me, why is it that I think that we could possibly have a $1,200 less per pupil expenditure than other parts of the state? Is that, is, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, one thing I do want to say that we are also looking in, at some lagged data. So this could be representative of anywhere from 2015 to 2018 data. So that could come in, into the answer there for you. But also Berkeley County, we have a lot of newer teachers here, and we have a lot of, you know, different ways that we allocate, allocate our funding. So I'm not exactly, you know, sure what the difference would be as to why we are significantly lower. But I'm pretty sure that Mr. Butts has talked about this. I know when, when we have been together, he has mentioned a few things. And I know that he would definitely be someone that would be willing to discuss this with you all. But I, I can't really exactly say what my reasoning would be for what that difference would be.
I think we have a couple of factors in play. The data that's represented is from 2015. If you recall, 2014, we used about nine million in reserves to balance the budget. In 2015, we used about $2.3 million to balance the budget. So those two years, we were making a conscious effort to reduce our costs. The other thing you want to keep in mind, when you have a county like Canala County, their excess levy rate is about, I don't know, almost twice what ours is. I think they're 60 some million a year and worth 30 some million a year. So clearly they have additional funds for their students, whereas they only have about 5,000 more students than we have, maybe even 4,000. So there's lots of factors that come into play. The state aid is not the same for every county across the state. Some states actually get more money per pupil than, than we do. So I think there's lots of factors that contribute to that.
I thought you could only be at 100% excess levy.
Well, that's true, Pat, but Canala County is full of businesses. So their assessed values are much larger than our assessed values when you look at a whole.
Okay. Back to comparisons, I'm going to speak slow. When you compared West Virginia, we were all taking the same type of tests. I know it was two years ago. And when you compare that to the neighboring counties, there are numbers in the report comparing the proficiency on ELA and math going down with these counties. Why aren't we comparing neighboring states, counties in this report you're giving?
Um, yes, there, there, there is achievement data within there that compares Berkeley County Schools achievement data with our neighboring districts as well. Yes, that is, that is part of the report. And it does show discrepancy with our scores and, and the neighboring districts having some higher scores. Now, again, it is not the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment, but they do take a state assessment, which does essentially test grade level achievement if they're, with their state standards for ELA and math as well.
Some of these percentages are 20% greater in these other counties. I'm just wondering, do they have accountability tests before students are promoted? Have you all studied requirements differences in these states?
I'm sorry, I, I missed what you said. Have we all studied what? Pardon me?
We studied requirements of academic accountability for the students in neighboring states compared to our state.
At this time, we, you know, I have not, I personally have not been involved in a project where we have studied why, you know, what, what their achievement test looks like compared to our achievement test, because we really do not have knowledge of the exact test and, and what it looks like to take it, or why certain other systems, perhaps Maryland, Virginia or Pennsylvania, would have a higher score on their state assessments, because they all have their own version of, of what their state assessment is. So exactly what their test looks like, I would not be privy to that information. And I'm, and I, as far as I know, that is not something that we have done to this point to be able to specifically say what the state assessment in ELA would look like in those states compared to what it looks like here and is part of our West Virginia General Summit of Assessment.
Okay, going back to the performance and achievement of West Virginia counties, we have the highest graduation rate, yet with one exception, we have the lowest scores. Would you comment on that?
Well, I think that we are doing, working very, very hard within Berkeley County to work with our high schools and to work with the program, the completer programs that we do have, so that we are able to get our students at a, at a point where they are able to graduate. That's our goal for everyone, is we want them to be successful, be able to graduate and be productive citizens. So I think different departments that we have here at our level work very, very hard with the high schools to be able to have different programs that allow for students to be able to have a pathway to graduation.
Mr. Murphy, I can address that as we've talked about. Remember that assessment data is one shot at a time. But Betty Ann was talking about, it's true. The other thing is the fact that they look at dropout rate, we also have a lowest dropout rate. We're not just letting these students drop out. We're still working with them, trying to work with them, get them to graduate. So we do have the programs in place. And certainly, those programs include working on their achievement in math and English charts that allow them to graduate. As you'll see in our next monitoring programs, we'll discuss the programs that we're looking at to address those issues.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dillon. I, I'm just concerned that in our preoccupation with graduation rates, we are diminishing our academic achievement rate. And that's just a concern that I've shared before. When we go on to the, and I know this is not part of your presentation, but when we go to other states, I guess in a future presentation, we should look at the two school districts in South Carolina, Lexington, District 01 and 05. And we have to be careful. I know the demographics, when you look at minority students, but we also, I know, expect as much from any one group as another. And I, I want us to be careful when we talk about a percentage of African American and Caucasian and Hispanic. As a teacher, former teacher, I know all of those groups are capable of performing. And I don't want to see us do anything that's insensitive to the fact that they can perform. No excuses. Children know that if you treat them fairly and, and hold them to the same standard, you'll get the performance out of them. But I was, I would also suggest the committee, the board members get a hard copy of this document, because it's interesting to leaf through and compare different areas and things. Our children are leaving the state, they're competing beyond West Virginia. And this report does a very good job of showing how they're comparing in that process. I know I've talked to other board members who served in the military. We soon find out how we compare to other states when we're in competition for limited spaces in their schools in the military. But I, I commend Dr. Murphy for putting this report together. And I hope all of you get a paper copy to see the road ahead, goals ahead we need. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Murphy, I would like to just have, have one comment. There isn't, I would, I would say there's not one educator that is sitting in this room tonight or in Berkeley County Schools that would argue with anything that you're saying in regards to talking about student demographics. But that is the nature of how data is reported. It is on every standardized test that our students take, and that's the cells that we get back and the information in the way that it is dis segregated. We get all of those categories. And so that's why all that data is reported, as do all those other states. Whatever state assessment they're taking, it is reported out in all of those categories, as well as lowest socioeconomic status, as well as female and male. So that's just kind of the nature of standardized testing, is it's reported out in all of those student demographics. But absolutely, there is not an educator alive that does not want to have high standards for every one of those categories, or believe that any group of those students is able to perform, not able to perform at their highest capacity. So I definitely would agree with what you're saying.
Thank you. Good point.
Thank you all very much for your time, and thank you for listening, and thank you for your patience. And if there's nothing else, I'm gonna just mute myself and let my colleagues down the hall and, and my colleagues at home continue on with, with their, their portion after me. Thank you all so much.
We're gonna go to item number two under the monitoring items.
Dr. Queen, board members, what we're gonna do over the next few months is try to provide information on what our schools look like across the programmatic levels. And as we go through this, we're not just gonna discuss academic programming. We're also, and what you're gonna see is that at each programmatic level, not only do we talk about the, we have, but also we're gonna be, our awareness programs, our counseling programs and our programs for health and wellness of all of our students. With us, Stephen will be our team that focuses on our high school programs. And that includes Miranda Ralph, Kristi Heaton, and lastly Sharon Dove, Robin Lopez, Tim Pack, Pat Patton, and also with Mr. Stephen will have one of our high school principals, Paul Leffler from Mossman High School. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to our team as they discuss how we approach all those aspects from the high school level.
Mr. Kenny, can you please share your screen? Good evening, Dr. Queen, members of the board, Dr. Murphy and administrative staff. My name is Miranda Ralph, and I am the Secondary Instructional Specialist. And tonight, as Mr. Dullinger mentioned, along with many of my colleagues, we have the pleasure of talking and highlighting some of the outstanding programs that we have going on in our high schools. In light of what you just heard from the Hanover study that was presented by Betty Ann, we want you to know that the Department of Curriculum and Instruction used that data to really be the driving force behind our work plan that we've created this year. Within our presentation, you are going to hear our plan for addressing some of those opportunities for growth, and also how we plan to continue to excel in some of those areas that we deem to be a strength. Up first with us, we have Kristi Heaton.
Good evening. I am Kristi, as she said, Director of Academic Counseling. I'm going to go over the credits students need to graduate and our dual credit program. I'm going to go over the credits students need to graduate and our dual credit programs. To graduate from high school, Berkeley County students need 24 credits. This is an overview of the number of credits. I'm sorry, Dave, next slide. Thank you. Okay, this is an overview of the number of credits per subject that students will need. Policy 2510 was recently revised, but there were few changes. As you can see, four math credits are still required. However, the prescribed courses are now Algebra I and Geometry. If students plan to attend college, Algebra II will also be prescribed. Students who do not plan to attend college may choose to personalize their third and fourth credits. Beginning with this year's ninth graders, students who take US History I will now be required to take US II. However, students may still choose to replace US I and US II with comprehensive studies. Next slide. Berkeley County Schools has partnerships with Blue Ridge Community and Technical College, Shepherd University, and West Virginia University to provide dual credit opportunities for students. As I discuss each program, I will talk about the courses in terms of students' daily schedules. However, this year, all of the courses at Blue Ridge and WVU are being taught virtually, and Shepherd is doing either a virtual or a hybrid model, meaning that some students choose to go to class while others participate virtually. Next slide. Seniors may choose to participate in the Jump Start Program at Blue Ridge in the mornings. The goal is for a senior to be able to earn the first year of an associate degree during their senior year. We began the Jump Start Program in 2017-18 with six programs. As you can see, we have added more programs each year and have a total of 13 programs this year. Our ultimate goal is for students to graduate high school with an associate degree. However, we will need Policy 2510 to change again and give us leeway to do that. Next slide. Blue Ridge has created a lookbook for the Jump Start Programs. This is one example from the education program. This is a page, there is a page for each program in the lookbook. For each program, it shows the college courses that will be taken and how those courses are placed onto a high school transcript. Next slide. Berkeley County Scholars Program with Blue Ridge began in 2007, and it is still going strong. Students may choose to take afternoon courses at Blue Ridge. The great thing about these courses is that students who are involved in extracurricular activities can be back at their respective high schools in time to participate. Next slide. This year, we are continuing our program with Shepherd at their Edwin Miller Campus. Students attend classes for three periods in the morning and are back at the high schools for fourth period. This is the schedule of classes for the year. As you can see, there are also courses available after school that the students can go to Edwin Miller and take. Students may also choose to take courses on the main campus at Shepherd. We have a dual credit program catalog where students use à la court classes. Next slide. WVU Access used to be the opatomic state courses. This is our oldest program, and it began in the 90s. These courses are available at Martinsburg High School in the evenings. These are the courses that are currently being taught there. Next slide. WVU College Algebra, Trig, and Calculus, and Biology are all offered in each high school and are taught by Berkeley County teachers who are vetted to teach the college courses. So those are taught during the day at each high school. Next slide. These are the students who currently attend the Jump Start Program at Blue Ridge. They're on the cover of this year's booklet. Policy 2510 may govern the requirements for graduation, but it is our responsibility to provide as many opportunities as we can to ensure students graduate college and career-ready within the guidelines of this policy. This leads right into the career and technical education programs that Ken will present. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Good evening, board members, Dr. Murphy, Ken Pack here, Director of CTE Curriculum and Instruction. Staying the path on career awareness, let me take a few minutes to talk about our career and technical education programs. In our four high schools, around a fourth of our high school students are enrolled in a CTE class. This could be a business, ag, marketing, millworking, ROTC, or baking and pastry class. CTE has consistently had solid numbers of completers for the past eight years. Next slide. We have 12 different concentrations available in our high schools. Remember, a completer is when a student takes four classes in one subject area of a concentration. They complete, they participate in a simulated workplace, not de-testing, business and industry reviews from school administration, students and staff, as well as making portfolios, resumes, and they will also earn work in earning a national credential. Next. As you can see from the slide here, these are the concentrations that our students, Berkeley County students, will have an opportunity to earn by the end of their senior year. I'd mentioned simulated workplace, but allow me to take a minute to highlight one of our great programs that we have. Again, this is just one program of all of our many programs that shine here in Berkeley County. Next. Next slide, please. It's our Muslin Baking and Pastry. This class has embraced the simulated workplace and has grown from our 2018 and three years to a student-based learning center with students holding leadership roles such as general manager, quality control manager, accountant, safety manager. They have over 200 Surf Safe Manager certificates in the last three years. Next. They have served over 1,000 meals, not only to Muslin staff, but to the community. The teacher can tell you about how many students are making critical decisions about food, the company, and the respect for others as they work as a company. Next. And as you think about how they have adapted through COVID, and with the help of their program of Surf Safe, they have addressed those issues and made it safe for all to participate. At this time, I will introduce Sharon Dove to speak about our technology programs. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sharon Dove, Assistant Director of Instructional Technology, and I'm here to talk about the technology we have in our schools. Let's start with devices, and I think, Dave, we might need to go to the slide that has all of the technology on it. I think, are we, there we go, thanks. All of our high school teachers have a MacBook, and all of our students have a Chromebook. And this slide that you're seeing talks, shows some of the digital platforms that we have available for students and teachers. Schoology is our learning management system, and therefore it's the most often-used digital platform. It's the gradebook and a communication tool, and it's also a place for assignments and assessments and discussions, and where teachers can put links for students. This year has presented unique challenges for our teachers and students, and technology has played an important role in the solution for some of these challenges. Video is super important in the remote and virtual environments, and teachers use the native Apple apps such as QuickTime and iMovie for screen recordings and creating videos. And then MyVRSpot is our go-to platform for video storage and sharing. Science teachers and their students get to engage in interactive science simulations through Gizmos, and it's really beneficial this year since in-class labs are not always an option. Gizmos provides teachers and students an amazing online graphing calculator and the ability for teachers to create digital math activity, and a really great thing is it's free. NearPod and Learn 360 we've had for a while, and both of those platforms provide teachers with standard-based content for their lessons. iXL and Am I Right were purchased this year to assess with our math and writing curriculum, and Khan Academy is also used a lot in our high schools, and will be discussed later in this presentation. Next up is Pat.
Hi, I'm Pat Patton, Coordinator of Project Aware, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Since I'll be attending the board meeting again in two weeks to present a more thorough description of Project Aware with youth and family support, tonight I'd like to give you just a brief overview of the programs we're providing. Project Aware provides evidence-based mental health treatment and support to students, and also purchases evidence-based curriculum to be taught in Berkeley County schools. Providing school-based mental health therapy is what we're best known for, and we do this at no cost to the family. This is available at all schools and is available to students who are brick and click. Communities and Schools is a program that provides social workers to seven schools. These social workers collaborate with school staff to identify students who are at the highest risk of dropping out of school. The social workers support these students and their families to reduce these risk factors and help the students stay in school and work towards graduation. Healthy Youth Through Prevention Education is a collaboration with the Berkeley County Day Resource Center, and this program provides additional funding for prevention education, as well as therapy and resources specifically for students and families who've been affected by substance use disorders. The Handle With Care Program is a collaboration with law enforcement, and in Berkeley County specifically, the Martinsburg Police Department. When a student is exposed to a traumatic event in the community and Martinsburg Police are on the scene, they send a Handle With Care Notice to the school. This allows school staff to be ready the next day to support that student and help them focus on learning. We also provide small group therapy. And to do this, we collaborate with community agencies to provide mental health and support groups, as well as mindfulness training and yoga classes, and we're working with these agencies so that they can provide these services virtually. Thanks for giving me the time to discuss Project Aware, and I look forward to seeing you at the next board meeting.
Next, Dave, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm Robin Lopez. I'm the Director of Assessment and Accountability and the Instructional Specialist for grades three through five. My focus this evening is on assessment and accountability at the high school level. And what you're seeing on the screen is the West Virginia Department of Education's Bounce Scorecard. This is the portion directly related to the high school level. And if you just remember in terms of what we've talked about over the past two years, the West Virginia Department of Education uses a Bounce Scorecard accountability system to help parents and community members understand how well schools are doing. This current system was implemented in 2017-18 and was designed to highlight student achievement and identify areas of improvement for each school. Schools are evaluated on four indicators and eight measures at the high school level. The first indicator is student achievement. At the high school level, we look at proficiency in English, language arts, and mathematics and on the annual assessment for grade 11, which is the SAT School Day. The second benchmark indicator for high schools, this indicator is the percentage of students who graduate in four years and five years. The third is the English Language Learners Indicator. This indicator measures how students who are learning English as a second language are progressing in their mastery of English language, of the English language in four domains, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And the final indicator is student success. At the high school level, there are three measures of student attendance. Students with greater than 90% attendance, on track to graduate, students are required to earn at least 12 credits, at least two credits each in the four primary content areas by the end of 10th grade. Post-secondary, which discusses acquiring credits towards college and career readiness by accomplishing one or more of the following: scoring a three or higher on an AP exam, earning a C or better in a dual-credit course, or becoming a CTE completer. The West Virginia Accountability System tells how well our students are learning, growing, and achieving. Next slide, please. So what's new for 2020? If you think about assessment in its simplest terms, it is a process of gathering information about student achievement to inform educational decisions. Now worse than ever, we need to provide students, teachers, administrators, and parents with data that shows where students are in regard to their learning, where they need to be in regard to their learning, and how we can close the gap. The Hanover Report that Betty Ann spoke with you about showed academic similarities between our district and Cavill County. Prior to establishing our relationship with College Board, we collaborated with Cavill County College Board and our high school administrators. As a result of this collaboration, we made the decision to administer the PSAT 8, 9 to all ninth-grade students, and the PSAT NMSQT, which stands for National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, to all grade 10 and 11 students in the fall. The PSAT 8, 9, and 10 will be given to all ninth and 10th grade students in the spring. This will give us two data points to compare growth. In the spring, grade 11 students will take this State Summit of Assessment, which is the School Day, and their results will be compared to the fall PSAT NMSQT. There are many benefits for our students to take these assessments. First and foremost, it provides teachers and students with diagnostic information on students' needs for instructional planning, and will allow teachers to make instructional changes based on the data. The focus is always on teaching and learning. The purpose of assessing is to drive instruction to ensure our students are college and career-ready. The PSAT 8, 9, and the PSAT NMSQT for grades 10 and 11 establish baseline showing the areas where students are on track for success in college, as well as pinpointing the skills that need attention and practice. This assessment will also match students with advanced placement courses for future grades. Miranda and I had a conversation when she first came on board, and we really spent some time talking about this and how this data can be used to really catch those students that are flying below the radar and allow us to really encourage them and get them to participate in the advanced placement courses. This is important because AP courses give students an opportunity to earn credit while still in high school and can help them stand out when applying for college. The PSAT NMSQT also provides the potential that juniors might qualify for the academic recognition through the National Merit Scholarship Program. The important thing is, once we do these assessments, we do something with the data to make instructional changes. There are many supports and tools that are provided by College Board to assist us. And in the next segment, Miranda and Ann are going to go into much more detail. Thank you. Next slide, please.
So our plan for improving math and ELA achievement will take a much more personalized approach here this coming school year. So right now, we are going to present, we have a four-phase implementation process that we are gonna utilize. This four-phase approach will present a level of shared accountability across teachers, students, and even our families. Just in being in the high school world the last couple of years, there was a lot of ownership placed on our teachers and some ownership placed on our students as well. But oftentimes, we would get that phone call from a parent that asked, "How can I help my child at home?" And this new kind of four-phase mentality will really give parents and families the opportunity to assist their students. So Phase One is absolutely where we are at this moment. Our students just participated, our ninth grade and our 12th grade just participated in the PSAT and SAT respectively. Unfortunately, our sophomores and juniors will have to have theirs postponed because of COVID and us not being in school. But at this moment, our teachers will be receiving data from the PSAT that was given. Phase Two is probably the most important part. This is the part where our students will create college board accounts that will stay with them for the duration of their high school career. Many of our older students, our 11th graders and our 12th graders, already have college board accounts. Some of our younger students have them as well if they have taken the PSAT or SAT on their own. But as far as whole county, that implementation will start to happen here when we come back first of the year. That information that students are able to share with College Board will then dump into Khan Academy, which will make a personalized learning path for each individual student. That is the part that is so critical for them, for our teachers, and for families. Our teachers will be able to look at where our students are as a class, but our students will be able to drill down to see where they are in particular, and they'll be able to tailor their instruction or what they're needing based on what the assessment data provided. Phase Three will be our students working independently on their personalized learning pathway in Khan. The really neat thing with Khan Academy is that parents are able to get on, and they're actually able to be a coach of their student. Ms. Kleppner is gonna speak here in just a couple of minutes, and I know she's gonna talk a little bit about that and what that looks like from the parent perspective, as she was. as she was really able to do that with her own students here in the last couple of years. Phase Three for our teachers will simply be a progress monitoring. They're going to check in and kind of see how things are going and assess the data. That will be more through common assessments in their classroom and just quick assessments that they can pick up on, nothing formal, just informal areas of assessment within their classroom. And then Phase Four, our students will participate in that second data point. For our juniors, it will be the SAT School Day. For our sophomores and freshmen, it will be taking that PSAT again. Now, the beauty of this is that this information will stay with our students and it will track them all the way through their high school career. This works for our teachers as well, and when they utilize data teams, they're able to get that information and pass from year to year so that we really can drill down and find student needs and areas of concern and really start to reassess the way that we are instructing and maybe utilize our meetings here at the county level with our principals and really get talking about best practices and making sure that all of our students are achieving. Next slide, please. This is just an example of one piece of the College Board Assessment and Reporting Portal that teachers have access to. College Board really does a fantastic job of making things very readily and easily available for our teachers. Our teachers are able to look at the general overall, how we're doing scores, benchmarks, kind of class compared to class, but then they can also drill down all the way to each individual question and how every student in that class answered those questions. As we all know, a lot of times, more learning can occur from looking at answers that students missed rather than just simply looking at the answers that they got correct. So giving our teachers that availability and allowing them to look at that data and really dive in is going to be something that will really be impactful in the future of the high school program of study. Next slide, please. Something else that's really important is the Skills Insight. This is something that's available to families, teachers, and students. The nice thing about this is that students are able to look at where they scored, and then this document shows them areas that they did well and then areas that need improvement. So not only are our teachers aware of that, our students are aware, our families are aware, and it really is a whole collective ownership so that we can all work together to promote the success of our students. Next slide.
All right. Good evening. I'm Ann Lasky, and I'm the Math Instructional Specialist here in Berkeley County Schools. And I'm going to talk to you tonight about why we chose Khan Academy as our practice platform for our high school students. A relationship has been established between Khan Academy and the College Board, and the College Board has created the SAT, PSAT. And this relationship has added benefits for our students. So the first thing is the personalized study plan that Miranda just spoke about. And it personalizes the kids' learning. It also holds them accountable for their own learning. The other benefit for our students is that practice lessons and questions in Khan Academy are written by the same authors that write questions for the SAT and the PSAT. So this exposes our students to the same rigor and style that they're going to see on the SAT and the PSAT. The other thing is, the College Board has provided research that shows if a student spends 20 hours on the official SAT practice on Khan Academy, the average score increases by 115 points. And this is double the average score that a student gains without using Khan Academy. And it also showed us that out of 250,000 test takers, more than 16,000 students gained 200 points or more between the PSAT and the SAT using Khan Academy. So all of these benefits and relationship has made us choose why we're going to use Khan Academy as our practice platform. So next slide, and at this time, I'd like to introduce Holly Kleppner, Principal of Musselman High School, to speak to you guys.
Good evening, everyone. What the curriculum team has talked about with PSAT and SAT is very exciting to us as high school principals. If you think back three years ago, it was around the end of October in 2018, and we all were under the impression we were going to give the ACT that year, and the state decided at the last minute it was going to be the SAT. So we kind of went into that test in April, kind of scrambling. We weren't ready. The kids weren't ready in terms of having enough time to learn the type of questions, you know, to be prepped. It was kind of like going into a football game without scouting the other team. So you just kind of went in and did the best you could. Last year, we were so excited because we were starting to get used to Khan Academy. We had the kids' College Board accounts linked up, and then COVID hit right before we gave the SAT. So I really thought we were going to have some tremendous gains at the time with that. But we'll figure that out this year. Now with the county paying for the PSAT for nine, 10, and 11, that is going to be such a great indicator from the beginning to where they need to be for the SAT. And as a parent, I can see how my student can hook up their Khan Academy from the PSAT that'll prepare them for the SAT. As a parent, you can get emails that can remind your student to work on Khan Academy weekly and take the quizzes that are directed to their weak areas. So by the time he takes the SAT in April, he should be well-prepared for that and hopefully see the gains that Ann Lasky was just speaking of. I want to go back to the previous slides just so you can kind of see where our students are at Musselman in terms of dual-credit, completers, AP classes. We have so many options now for our students. It's unbelievable. All the different classes that they can take, whether they're doing it online, at school, or at some of our local colleges. For example, we have 188 students taking dual-credit at Musselman right now. 175 are in AP classes. This past year, we had 50 students with completers, but that's for four years. So a lot more students take one, two, or three classes in completers. So if you look at that, that's over 50% of our juniors and seniors that are involved in all these different options. So we're very lucky in Berkeley County with all the options we have for our students, and we're going to see, our kids are going to be very successful. We are on the right track, and we have a really great team that's helping support us at the high schools right now.
That is all that we have for you tonight. So if you have any questions, we would be happy to answer.
Just, I think I have three here. Earlier, sorry, earlier, you talked about four-year and five-year cohort graduation rates. I know this has been discussed before, and it's my problem, but students can take five years to graduate and still be all right. Anyone? Am I understanding it right?
Yeah, to a degree. Like, we'll get transfer students in, Mr. Murphy, or, you know, kids that, you know, they'll come to us as a 17-year-old with three credits from another county, another state. And we're given then the opportunity to graduate them in that five-year cohort.
Okay.
Is how that works.
Mr. Murphy, that, what they look at is they look at a cohort of students who come in as freshmen, and they look at what happens at the end of four years, supposedly their senior year, but they also look at a fifth year. And that's not just particularly West Virginia. That is a national statistic that's looked at for a five-year cohort.
Okay. And this pandemic is affecting the testing. Do we have a fallback plan to give the PSAT and other tests, if this lockdown continues? My question is, are we able to, say, in a room this size, bring in 50 students at a time to take a test when the schools close down? I know we're doing special ed students. I was just wondering if we could, because these tests impact whether they get college scholarships and other things.
Mr. Murphy, the College Board has allowed some flexibility with testing this year because of the pandemic. And we have a date, January 26th, for the rescheduled PSAT, NMSQT for grades 10 and 11. And all of the benefits and eligibility that apply to the fall test date will apply on January 26th test date as well. So they will still have the opportunity to qualify for the National Merit and Scholarship Program as well. And then in terms of moving forward with spring testing, right now, our understanding is that the federal government is moving forward. And at this time, currently at this time, they are not offering a waiver for testing this spring.
And we just tested about 175 seniors for SAT. The College Board gave them the option to get the free testing. It was probably about two weeks ago that they missed during the pandemic.
A couple of things about what Holly just said is our juniors who would have had a free SAT worry, but we were able to get the majority of those done before we went completely remote. Also, we're still able to give the ACT and the SAT as traditional on Saturdays, but we wouldn't give them in a room this size. We have to break it down to very small numbers. In fact, I think at most of the schools, we were testing maybe eight to a room to get that taken care of. So testing is going, but we're being cognizant of safety, credit calls as we're doing it.
I'm just concerned about students, I know the SAT and the old ACT. This is an opportunity for first-in-the-family students to go to college on the Promise Scholarship and other things. Now, just wondering how we're going to allow them to take the test so they can qualify for Promise another... February is when everybody signs up for the scholarships at the high school level?
Well, actually, Kristi can probably address this a little bit better than what I can, but we've actually began that process. So it used to be that you would begin after the first year, but now you can begin the FAFSA and everything starting in October. And in fact, we have just been addressing that within the last two weeks with our counselors, getting students to sign up for Promise and also taking a look at the testing and what testing they should be signing up for.
And finally, it's not a question. This is a compliment. In the presentation tonight, we're not just college-focused. We had other presentations tonight showing other options graduates pursue vocational and other avenues.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask a question on the graduation requirements. I guess Kristi, that was one of the first slides that Kristi went over. Civics, do we offer civics as a standalone class or is it incorporated into another class? And if so, if so...
Go ahead.
This is a part of one of the graduation requirements.
It is. So a US history course is required, a world history, and a civics. And then a student can do a personalized credit, and that's where that US II comes in. So if it takes the US I, then they're required to take the US II. That would be their fourth social studies. But if they take US Comprehensive, World, and Civics, then they could take a sociology, a multicultural, or a psychology. So yes, every student is going to receive a civics course.
Thank you. That's good to hear.
Yeah, I just have two quick questions. The first one, either Mr. Butts or Ms. Lasky can answer. The Khan Academy, I'm guessing it's like a subscription-type model service. Do you know how much we pay per year, per student on the high school level for it?
I should have added there that Khan Academy is free, so all those services are free.
Awesome. And with the 115-point increase, is it for the, is it both combined math and reading and writing, or just both of them combined?
I'm staring at Miranda, but we all did the same study. It's combined.
Yeah, it's their overall, it's the overall.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and presenting such valuable information. We appreciate it so much. Thank you. Item number three on the monitoring items is the COVID-19 financial update. Mr. Butts?
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Give me one minute to share my screen and get it up here for you guys to see. All right. So again, thank you, Dr. Queen, and the board. Tonight, I'm going to talk about the COVID-19 pandemic and its financial impact on our school system, not only for fiscal year '21, but also for fiscal year '22. And we're also going to talk about briefly how the COVID-19 has impacted our enrollment, staffing, technology, personal protective equipment, how students learn, in addition to the brick or click, also the virtual school and homeschool, transportation, and child nutrition. So I just have a handful of slides to go over with you. First of all, with COVID-19, it's impacted our enrollment for our students. And why that is important is it's a part of our state aid 10-step formula. So with this, each year when we build our budget, based upon our history, we've included what's called increased enrollment in our revenue calculation. The fiscal year '21, we had an actual decline of students, of about 400 students. That impacted our current year budget by $500,000. We had $500,000 included with our budget for increased enrollment, and as the pandemic has hit, those students did not show. What that means for fiscal year '22, looking forward, is about a $2 million reduction in state aid. And why does that happen? Well, step one, two, and five of the state aid formula is based upon student enrollment. And so the state on our professionals, they allow or they support and fund 72.3 professional positions for every thousand students. So because we have a reduction of 396 students, the state will fund 28.6 fewer positions. Same thing with the student support. The state typically funds five student support staff per 1,000 students. So for us, it's about a 1.98 fewer positions funded next year. And then lastly, our service personnel, the state funds us at 43.97 service personnel per thousand. So that will only fund 17-point fewer positions fewer next year. Now, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball for next year, and maybe those students will come back. But based upon where we are today, that's our anticipated hit to not only this year's budget, next year's budget when it relates to enrollment. The staffing, and we've talked about this before, but because of the brick and the click and other areas, we've increased the total number of positions 31 this year that we would not have typically hired if it wasn't due to COVID. And some of those positions are nursing staff that we're trying to beef up. So based upon where we are projected right now, it's about a $1.95 million hit. Now, I do want to remind you, this is an annualized amount for us, and not all those positions have been filled yet. We're having this difficulty finding some of the positions to fill. Another area that has hit us with the COVID is classroom coverage. Because with, you know, the brick and the click and the way the students dispersed between those two programs, we've had to increase our 1/7 classroom coverage. That's where a teacher gives up one of their periods to teach another class. Typically, on a normal year, it's around 10 to 15 staff that picks up a 1/7 class coverage. This year, we're well over 100 staff taking on that role. So that's about a $1.1 million additional cost to us this year for the staff. Secondly, we spend a lot of money on technology, and again, a lot of that came from the CARES Act. But we bought, and you've heard through other presentations up to this point, you know, we bought laptops, iPads, Chromebooks. We have bought software to put on those devices to monitor what the kids are looking at and researching. We also know with our community, we have difficulty with the internet, so we've purchased hotspots and Comcast internet access. And then also, we have created an IT tech support line to help the students and the parents for after-hour support with their technology. And that equates to about $3.8 million this year on that activity. When we talk about other supplies, we're talking about the personal protective equipment. It's everything from masks to sprayers to signage on the floors, to thermometers to check temperatures. And so far, year-to-date, we spent $1.1 million for those types of expenditures. And so far year to date, we spent one point one million dollars for those types of expenditures. The next one is, is the student support. Again, none of our students came back, which is why we had a three hundred and ninety-six um, enrollment decline. We had a hundred and forty students enroll in the virtual school where we do, still do, we get to keep them on our enrollment numbers. It is an additional cost to us that our district normally would not have had. And that's about two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, obviously, we have some remote learning with the click. Our homeschool from uh, according to our pupil services, increased about a hundred and eighty students over normal years. Uh, so those are students that we have lost out of the three hundred and ninety-six count. They contributed to that. And then we also, on the students of that side, we've also added instructional support hotline where we're paying staff uh, extra hours in the evenings to support any um, educational questions that may come up. Uh, the other two items, we don't have a good number one yet, but we know it's out there is our transportation. In a typical year, um, you know, we would transfer students at schools from one bus to transfer them to another. With this year, we're not doing that. We're keeping the kids separated. So whatever bus they ride to school, they will also ride that same bus to transfer to another school. For instance, those to family uh, where one kid goes to Mountain Ridge Middle and one goes to Musman High, uh, instead of putting all the kids that would transfer from Mountain Ridge to Musman High, they would, they don't ride the same bus now. Uh, they all take individual buses. So we have a cost there. We're not sure what that is at this point. And then child nutrition, uh, we don't have a good number for that one yet either. We know it's to be determined. Uh, while the um, the summer school program, the summer feeding program was extended through December thirty-first and all meals are paid for at the federal rate. Uh, we're not serving as many meals as we typically would under uh, the normal brick environment. And obviously in the normal brick environment, uh, some, some parents pay and some are free and reduced and some are completely free. We have some CEP schools. So that number we know is out there and we need to uh, monitor that as moving forward. But today we don't have a number for that. So when you look at all those together, all those areas together, we spent about eight point three million dollars this year for COVID or committed to spend eight point three between now and the end of the fiscal year. So how does that break down? So part of that money that we spent of eight point three, four point one of it came from the federal government CARES Act money. We received two grants. The first grant was about three point nine million dollars. And then we received a second grant of about two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Well, that still leaves about four point one million that we have to cover. And we're going to cover that obviously with our general funds. That's the only source of funds we have right now. And then when you look at what we started the year with for our reserves, our savings account, we had twelve point five million in there. So if you take the twelve point five less, we have to cover out of our general fund of the four point one, that's going to give us a projected end of the year reserves of about eight point three. And what that really means to us is we spent about a third of our reserves on the cost of COVID at this point. Now, there's been talk at the federal level, level for some additional funding coming, but obviously we haven't seen that yet and maybe things will change after the election. So we're hoping somewhere down the, the road, there'll be another um, issue of, of federal funding to help cover that. And then we also know the governor of West Virginia is still sitting on some of his COVID funding also. So we're hopeful at some point in time between now and June thirty, some of that money will come in of the four point one that we're spending out of our general fund. But obviously there's no guarantee for that. Uh, we just wanted to give you a heads up of where we are today, uh, looking forward between now and the end of the year and then heading into next year's budget season. Are there any questions?
Just, just uh, one Jim. Um, first, uh, the CARES money, we also have to share it with some other private local schools, did we not?
That, that is correct. And I don't have the number off the top of my head, but I think it was around a hundred thousand of the four million, three point nine million.
Okay. Um, the, something that would help, help me and I'm sure other members. And I've heard, uh, I've heard Dr. Murphy on a, on a program down at Shepherd College. Um, there are a lot of numbers who ask us like, how many are click, how many are brick, these kind of numbers that you just shared tonight? Percentage of students who have or, or in zones where they don't have the internet service. There's kind of COVID facts that uh, float around that we, we see every so often. I was just wondering uh, if staff could put together a kind of COVID impact sheet. Of all that data, you know, meals, I, I understand meals served, we're following that on the newsletter, but this kind of information people are asking, and I hate to admit, I do not know. But uh, if that could be put together, that would be appreciated. This little COVID fact card uh, would help along. Thanks for this information, Mr. Butts.
And thank you, Mr. Murphy. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, Jim, Jim, just real quick, uh, first thing you said, estimated decrease in student enrollment. Maybe you explained it about three hundred and ninety-six students. Was that decrease from what we projected or an actual decrease from last year?
So that is a decrease from last year. We went from nineteen thousand, six hundred and I think it's twenty-one or twenty-six full-time equivalent students when we did our uh, enrollment count last October. This October, I think we're at nineteen thousand, uh, two twenty-five. So it's three hundred and ninety-six students uh, was the difference. So it's actual decline from where we were last year at this time. Now again, we're hopeful, you know, the, once the pandemic uh, is beyond us, uh, we'll have those students come back and we'll also experience our normal student growth. Uh, but this year again, um, some of the parents did not elect to enroll their kids. And a lot of those came from our pre-K or younger kids where their parents didn't enroll them for the first time in school.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, Mr. Butts, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Um, is there any like calculations of any like cost savings from say busing for athletics? Um, like numbers like that?
Uh, we, we have not looked at that. Again, I had some transportation costs separate to be determined. Um, I, I don't know what those numbers would be, but that's not a large portion of our budget to start with is the extracurricular activities. Um, and we do have separate funding from the state uh, for some of those extracurricular transportation uh, costs.
Thank you.
Uh, followed question, you said the virtual students, a hundred and forty of them. How much is the money that, how much are we spending?
I believe if I'm correct, Donnie, correct me, was it sixteen hundred dollars per, per student? It's normally twenty-two hundred. Is that correct?
That is.
Yeah, so we're.
Go ahead.
So that's, that's what we're spending is a hundred and forty. I think it's times sixteen hundred. I think if, if you do the math, that's what it comes out to.
Okay, and, and uh, we'd be asking for uh, uh, these students to be counted in our enrollment if, if in part, uh.
They, they are counted, uh, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, I thought they weren't.
Uh, the homeschool children are not counted. Uh, the virtual, West Virginia Virtual School students are accounted in our enrollment. And our state aid for this year is five thousand, I think fifty-one per student. So we are getting that for those a hundred and forty students.
So how many home, how many homeschooled students? That'd be an increase of a hundred and eighty, but how many, do you know off the top of your head?
I do not, and, and I don't know if Donnie knows from pupil services or uh, attendance, but I think it's three hundred and twenty-some, Donnie. Does that sound right?
No, total, um, students, uh, were um, uh, up, up above eleven hundred students.
Okay.
But it, they, they don't cost as much as an in-school student.
We, we don't get anything for those, Mr. Murphy. They don't cost us anything and we don't get anything.
This is, these are students who are completely homeschooled. This isn't homebound. This is homeschool.
Okay.
That's a.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
Hey, thank you, guys.
Uh, item number four, the monitoring items is the Berkeley County Parks and Rec request to help develop facilities at Martinsburg North Middle School. Mr. Don, you're here.
Okay, and I believe uh, Mrs. Kizner or Mr. Kenny are going to put up the map. Uh, we were approached by uh, Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks and Rec uh, to look into the development, uh, some reckless recreational facilities uh, on property that the Board of Education uh, owns between the Berkeley two thousand rec center and North Middle School. Uh, these facilities would include four beach volleyball courts, four pickleball courts and an outdoor basketball court. Uh, the proposal is that these facilities would be used by North Middle School students during the day. And then when our, when our students are not in, in school, they would be open for uh, parks rec use and public use uh, when the students are not uh, present. Uh, the cost to, to construct these facilities would be uh, borne by the uh, Parks and Rec. And if you take a look at the photo that, that we have, aerial photo, uh, you see the back of the parking lot to the right. That is uh, Parks and Rec. And then you see the construction of those facilities. And then you see the back of uh, of North Middle School uh, there. And that's the uh, up to the very top. That's the new addition that uh, we had added uh, to North Middle School uh, a few years uh, back. But again, it's the pickleball courts, the basketball court and the uh, volleyball court. Um, we uh, our, we wanted to bring this, to share this uh, with the board. And then a, our proposal is, is that uh, senior staff works with the North Middle School Administration uh, with Parks and Rec Director uh, Alan Corbin uh, to bring a future proposal to this board for approval of this product, uh, of this project. This is very similar to projects that we have done with Parks and Rec in the past. Uh, as you know, we share facilities, Parks and Rec uh, will bring in a few of the school property requests for uh, use of um, our schools and their gymnasiums or their facilities. Uh, we certainly take advantage of using uh, Berkeley two thousand center, uh, the pools. Also, uh, the Randy Smith Center on the south end of county. And also we uh, use the um, warehouse farm uh, project. So, you know, this is just another project that we would be in collaboration uh, with uh, Parks and Rec on this. And again, the, this is just uh, to share with the board, uh, that this is uh, the request from Parks and Rec. Uh, we will work with uh, Scott Mathis uh, in the North Middle School Administration with Alan to come to with a solid proposal in the future on this. Any questions?
Just, just make sure of security issues because no basketball courts at night. I know you'd turn the lights off and maybe they're in the summertime, you'll have all the neighbors complaining that there's a problem over there on the basketball court in the evening.
Yes, and again, we, we don't know the extent of the project. Right now, there's no uh, lighting that has been proposed. I'm sure there'll be security lighting, but no actual lighting for the uh, the courts at this time. But that is one thing that uh, in working with the North Administration uh, that they have requested to make sure that uh, that there, that there is security and that we monitor the use after school hours. Thank you, Dr. Queen.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight on the agenda is the action items. And the first one is the uh, bid, uh, the data center generator. Uh, Scott Mathis is here to uh, present that to us.
Yes, good evening, Doctor. Good evening, Dr. Queen, board members, uh, here this evening to ask for approval for the uh, the furnish and install of the emergency generator for backup power for the county's data center, which is located at Mountain Ridge um, middle school. Uh, we award that to Ellsworth Electric for a bit of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars. Um, and this project, uh, if approved, we've got uh, probably about two to three months lead time on the equipment. And then uh, once the generator's here, we can uh, get it hooked up. So best case scenario, looking like the first of the year, we'd be able to have this connected and uh, serving us backup power for the data center.
I hear a motion from the board to approve uh, Ellsworth Electric uh, for a total of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars for the uh, generator, um, the uh, data center generator located at Mountain Ridge Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Beckwith to approve uh, this bid of sixty-six thousand, one ninety-four for the uh, county's data center uh, uh, generator, uh, again located at uh, Mountain Ridge Middle School and will be awarded to Ellsworth Electric. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, that carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number two under the action items is the um, BCS file GAB, critical needs shortage substitute teachers. Uh, Dr. School.
Good evening, President Queen, members of the board. Uh, before you this evening is the critical needs GAB policy. This policy is our annual renewal as required by a code. Uh, last year the code section was updated, so a few technical terms were updated. Well, the main difference in this policy was the addition of school counselors being able to serve more than a hundred and forty days as well as extending uh, the term for this current year to uh, the twenty-twenty-one school year and the code section to twenty-five. Superintendent recommends passage of this policy.
I hear a motion from the board to approve Berkeley County Schools File GAB, critical needs shortage substitute teachers um, as presented. So I've gone through the uh, proper uh, comment and review period of which there were no comments received during that period. So is our motion.
How seconded?
Motion by Dr. Gilpin, a second by Mr. Murphy to approve this um, policy as presented. Is there any discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The opposed, that carries unanimously. Item three under the action items is the uh, Berkeley County Schools File GBJ perspective, prospective professional personnel. Dr. School.
Thank you, Dr. Queen. Uh, File GBJ is the uh, perspective professional personnel policy again. And to, this policy is updated to the new code uh, that came through the legislature last year as well as providing some of the incentive opportunities that were in code prior to get into our policy that we previously had. There were no comments received on this policy and much of this policy is quoted out of code uh, such as uh, Mr. Murphy and I had a conversation on the first page in AND or NOR, and the OR does come directly out of code. So uh, the superintendent recommends the approval of this policy as well.
It's your a motion for the board to approve this policy, GBJ, prospective professional personnel as presented. And again, it's gone through the proper um, comment and review period and there were no comments received. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Beckwith and a second by Dr. Gilpin to approve the prospective personnel, professional personnel policy as presented. Is there any discussion?
Um, just, I appreciate Dr. Schoolie uh, researching that. Uh, I'd just like to point out under paragraph B. I'm, I'm sorry. Anyway, it just says, um, the notice is posted in a conspicuous place in each school or on the board's website. And I, I was just concerned that you, uh, people might be looking in one place and it's available at another spot. But since the code says what it says, I, I think that you should follow the code to the letter. And I, I support it. I just was concerned about uh, notifying people before other people were employed.
Any other comments? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Item four under the action items is the personal actions. Dr. School.
Thank you, Dr. Queen, members of the board. The personnel actions dated November the second, two thousand and twenty are as follows. We have eight new coaching appointments. We have two interim coaching appointments. We have three renewal of contracts of coaches and four coaching resignations. We have one new extra duty appointment, four healthcare appointments, three unpaid medical leave of absences, two corrections, one is a location as well as a start date. And the other is also the start date there. We have eight new one-seventh appointments. We have one, one-seventh removal. Uh, we have a correction to the epic supplemental salary with the Mrs. Bowers retirement early. So this would change earlier for our employee. We approved that at a previous board meeting. Two resignations. We have one correction of a transfer with the number of days that was supposed with corresponded to the job posting. On the service side, we have one new appointment. We have two resignations. We have three retirements on the service side. And I'll draw your attention to line number forty-six with the retirement of Miss Sharon Kizner, who works for you as Secretary of Law, deserve. Thank you, Sharon. We have eight transfers. Three upgrades of service personnel. We have three appointments of substitute service personnel. One resignation of substitute personnel and two resignation to the substitute teachers for a total of sixty-three personnel actions.
I hear a motion from the board to approve the. I hear a motion from the board to approve the professional, the service, the coaching and the substitute positions as presented tonight.
I'm going to approve the professional service, coaching and substitute actions as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Beckwith, a second by Mr. Murphy to approve all the personnel actions as presented tonight. Is there any discussion?
Sharon. Can't say enough about what, I appreciate what all you've helped me with.
I just want to say to Sharon, you will be missed. There's no doubt in my mind, you're kind and efficient. It's just amazing how you have reacted to us and helps us so much. I know you have a legitimate excuse for retiring, not only age, but you have other issues you would like to attend to. But thank you so much for being such a wonderful secretary to the superintendent and such a help to all the board members. But first of all, I want to congratulate you for being such a wonderful person. You are just amazing and we're truly going to miss you, truly. Thank you.
You'll get younger with that little baby.
Any other comments? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Item number nine on the agenda is the board updates.
I just want to point out that we received by email a survey by Justin Mock from South Middle, and it is, it is a wonderful report that I just got around to reading. I, some amazing numbers here, and I don't want to read it. I just announced that it is available, I think it was the last meeting that we received. Thank you, Mr. President.
I, this morning, I had the excellent privilege to watch our nutrition staff down at South Middle. Tracy Heck and the team down there did a fantastic job. The number of cars that were to the road was, was insane to me. But they cranked it out and got people in and out within ten minutes. Very efficient, so if you guys ever want to go down there with me, and I definitely recommend going and watching them, do what they do. Just one other thing, on October twenty-seven, my committee assignments to the diversity council, and we had our meeting. They said it was one of the best I've ever had, and hopefully we can get the meetings to monthly instead of just twice a year to build on equity and inclusion in Berkeley County Schools.
Thank you. Item number ten on the agenda is the superintendent's announcement. Dr. Murphy?
Yeah, thank you very much, Dr. Queen, and I'll echo some of the comments earlier. Thank you to Ms. Kizner for a very smooth transition and a welcoming here to Berkeley County Schools. You will be dearly missed, but we are going to have several ways to entice you to come back and visit as often as possible. And congratulations to you and your family. One of the first items that I'd just like to kick off, and we talked about it sort of threaded through the meeting, and that is the college application and exploration week, which kicked off this week. And as part of that, our school counselors are driving this initiative. It's an initiative that is pre-K through twelve, and it really explores the various college options and post-secondary opportunities. And in this picture here, it just so happens, this was taken last year. You see students wearing face coverings here, and they're doing a career exploration activity, creating sentence structures. The one item that I'd like to highlight is our Promise Scholarship, which is a merit-based financial aid program here in West Virginia for residents of the state. And it's for students that are high school graduates who are eligible for annual awards up to forty-seven hundred dollars, and this is to cover the cost of tuition and any mandatory fees. I do want to make note that the state has shared with us that participation thus far in the program this year is trending a little slow. So, we've been encouraged to get the word out about that, and I just want families to be aware of that. The best people to talk to are your school counselors at your school and get the information about how to apply. I also want to do a shout out to several of our students who were nominated from Berkeley County Schools that are nominees. The first two for the U.S. Presidential, Nina Saluja, and she's from Spring Mills, and Alex Alba from Martinsburg High, as well as for the CTE Scholarship nominees, Brianna Holston from Martinsburg and Alexander Heath from Musselman High. And those students will move forward to the state level where they'll be competing with some of their peers in the other fifty-four counties, and we wish them the best. I want to give you a little bit of an update as far as where we are with the status of instruction. My continued theme is that we want our students back into schools. We've been sharing that theme sort of across multiple platforms here, through in-touch communiques, through my interaction with local media, newspaper and on the radio, and also working very closely with our health department and the National Guard. We are advocating for folks to go out and have testing done, and some of that testing actually is occurring here this evening up until eight-thirty earlier, and it begins at noon. We also pushed out a message here that talked about the various spots, Spring Mills Monday today through next Sunday, and that's noon to eight P.M. Musselman High is Monday to Sunday. Hedgesville High is Monday, Wednesday, Thursday and Sun, through Sunday. And then because of elections on Tuesday, which is tomorrow, at sites that are election sites of these here, Hedgesville and Musselman, we are going to have at Berkeley Morgan Board of Health on Tuesday from eleven-thirty to three-thirty, and then at, then later in the afternoon at the medical testing center there from four-thirty to eight-thirty. So, we do have a host of different tools that we're using, obviously, wearing face coverings, face coverings, practice social distancing and good hygiene. We also know that people that may be feeling ill, they go get tested, they find out that they're positive. However, there's other individuals that may not be showing symptoms. And so those folks are identified as asymptomatic, but they may be, because of their interaction, they may be spreading the virus. And it's really helpful through the testing as another tool, find out who those individuals are so that they then can isolate or quarantine and kind of bring this virus to its knees. I do want to give you, though, a picture of what's happening inside of Berkeley County Schools. And these numbers do change, so this is a snapshot as of today. As of today, we have eleven active cases in eight different locations. So eleven individuals, students or staff have tested positive. To give you also an idea of our total population, we shared earlier that we have nineteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-six students. We have over twenty-seven hundred employees. So we have roughly twenty-three, twenty-three thousand members of the Berkeley County community that make this up. That's about eighteen percent of the total Berkeley County population, which is roughly a hundred and twenty-one thousand people. So if we break that down and look at our rate today or the number of positive cases that we have, we have five positive cases for every ten thousand individuals that are, I've identified as part of our Berkeley County community. So that testing is very important. And the fact that we want to solicit and advocate for that, we've reached out to all our families and staff, connected with our business partners through the Chamber, Main Street Martinsburg, also through the county offices, our PTA reps, the city police and our service and professional reps. We need to see a change, and we believe we can achieve that through this testing. So thank you again to the National Guard, also to our state offices and our local health department for advocating for this. As you can see nationally as well as locally, the spread of COVID is not something that's prevalent in our schools. It's predominantly out there in our community, but it does impact and affect us in our schools. And so we need to think about that very consciously and look at this as a community effort. And again, my, my cry to folks for that help and assistance is really to participate in the testing that is not only going to be going on this week, but well into the future and helping identify those individuals that may be asymptomatic or not showing symptoms. Moving on, we have Ashton Stoddard here at Eagle School, and she is using an iPad with an Apple pencil, and she's doing a math demonstration on her computer. So I'm encouraging all of us with our Click students that we make regular and ongoing contact. And I'm really soliciting parents to be playing an active role in this. I want to thank our teachers because talking with a number of our teachers, what they're telling me is they are in fact reaching out if they're not seeing students in class or there's not active participation. So I think our staff is doing a wonderful job in making those connections with families. But I want to encourage participation specifically for our students who are Click because number one, we need you to start to log in regularly to your classes. And number two, logging on is just the first step. The second step is to begin to engage actively in lesson. We've got the, end of the grading period coming up here on November the tenth, and we will be twenty-five percent of the way through the school year. So now is a good time to begin to make some progress. I know some time has passed, but again, now's the time to really begin to become much more engaged as you look at the remainder of the year. This time of the year also, we begin to push out messages about preparing for inclement weather. So I want to give everyone an update as I know that having the ability to do remote learning frees us up in the way to be able to provide instruction when we do have inclement weather. I do want to let you know that we've got five days built into our current calendar, and the first five snow days missed to inclement weather will not be made up. On the sixth day, however, we'll ask students and staff to observe remote learning. And if any additional days are needed in the future, we will address the sixth, seventh and so on days if we have inclement weather as driving us. We also recognize that because of our adjusted schedule or shortened instructional day for both brick and Click students, we will not be utilizing a one or two-hour delay in the morning. If necessary, though, for early dismissal, we will utilize a one-hour early dismissal due to inclement weather, and we'll kind of factor that also into how storms are moving into the area. This is also to let our community and parents know that an announcement will be coming out early if we do do a one-hour early out, and we'll hopefully just be making an announcement by eleven-thirty A.M. Again, we'll be using many of the common communication channels that we've done in the past. We encourage families to look at contingency plans. And this year, our hope is if we're making any decisions about snow days or remote learning days due to inclement weather, those decisions will be made by five-thirty A.M. in the morning or earlier. I want to recognize Kathy Wright and the entire staff at Winchester Avenue. They are celebrating a hundred years, nineteen twenty to twenty-twenty. And I have a T-shirt here that there's going to be part of that celebration that they're going to be handing out to their community. I also want to thank our sponsors, our partners in education that contributed to getting these shirts pulled together for the school. Just to give you a little bit of a snapshot also, in some of the tenures of some of the principals that were at the school, Paul Sherard was the first principal, and he was principal there from nineteen nineteen to nineteen fifty. A. Colin Nidenbusch was there from nineteen fifty to nineteen seventy-three. Jesse Jenkins from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen eighty-six. Rodney Woods from nineteen eighty-six to eighty-seven. Steve Crowell from nineteen eighty-seven to eighty-nine. Joyce Chapman from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand and two. Michelle Martin from two thousand and two to two thousand and five. Dean Warrenfelt from two thousand and five to two thousand and fifteen. And Kathy Wright took the reins in two thousand and fifteen. So you can just get an idea of some of the tenure of some of our principal leadership and individuals that worked in the school. I believe, Mr. Murphy, you also worked at the school there for a number of years. So hopefully you'll join in on some of the celebration that's happening there, and we'll be promoting that. We've got our Mission and Vision and Core Values group meeting back here on November the twelfth. They worked through a number of items, pulling the mission together at their last meeting. The plan still is that we will be bringing this board to the board on December the sixteenth and letting you folks know about what the mission, vision and core values and beliefs are. Speaking academically, I highlighted the nine weeks ends here on the tenth. We've got parent-teacher conferences on the seventeenth for primary, eighteenth for intermediate and nineteenth for middle. This is Ms. Cosner, a kindergarten teacher at Marlowe. And if families also want to do a virtual conferencing, that will be made available and just touch base with, with teachers. This group is the Valbats at Spring Mills Primary, A.E.I.O.U. and sometimes Y. And they were in the spirit of the season, so we want to thank the Valbats for their enthusiasm. Just a reminder that tomorrow is Election Day, and that is a holiday for students and staff. We also have, we'll celebrate Veterans Day on the eleventh, that's next Wednesday. And then the Thanksgiving break is November the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth. And our teachers continue to demonstrate, and staff continue to demonstrate a whole host of, you know, characters and enthusiasm. This is at Marlowe, and they are celebrating the book characters and dressing up Where Is Waldo? So thanking Katie Worthington and her entire staff out there. As you can see, the staff are, you know, sort of exuding enthusiasm to get kids involved. We just want to do some shout outs to folks this week who had some personal accomplishments, most notably our nutrition, transportation, school teams, staff and nurses. We had a video that we pushed out that talked about how meal distribution was going for remote learning. We also noted earlier that we have seen a real increase in communication by our teachers in taking the time to do that, especially reaching out to our Click students. I want to personally congratulate John Coleman, Hedgesville High School Boys Soccer Coach, who was selected the twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty West Virginia Coach of the Year for Boys Soccer. And then finally, Steve Campbell, the Athletic Director at Musselman High School, is recognized for earning his Certified Master Athletic Administrator from the NIAA Association. Congratulations, Steve, hard work and well done. And then finally, I'll just encourage folks, as they did last time, to follow me on my blog postings. I share different thoughts and ideas that are kind of relative to what the happenings are, not only here in Berkeley County, but across our nation in public education. So thank you.
Dr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Before I forget it, I have some VHS videotapes when I was working at Winchester Avenue. The son of the first principal, Mr. Ralph Sherard. I also have a tape, we interviewed these people as part of my class. Ms. Edna Ellis, who was a teacher there for many years, but she was also a second grade student when the school opened. The old school was up on Maryland Avenue, and they carried all the books and stuff from the old school. The old school was up on Maryland Avenue, and they carried all the books and stuff from the old school. I think it was in October down to Winchester Avenue, and we had a couple other people we interviewed. So don't, I'll forget. You help me out. I'll look for the tapes, and maybe we can transcribe them over to DVDs or the schools' records.
That's good. I'm sure they would enjoy those at the school. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Murphy. The next meeting is November sixteenth at five P.M. That's going to be the Musselman Region LSIC. And the next meeting after that is December seventh, two thousand and twenty. That's also at five P.M., and that's the Hedgesville Region LSIC. So is there a motion to adjourn?
Same move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, a second by Dr. Gilpin to adjourn. Is there any discussion?
All the meetings are here, correct?
Yes. All those in favor, say aye. The opposed? We are adjourned.